Okay, go ahead Chairman.
Okay, at this time I'd like to call the February 2021 meeting of the Niskuna zoning board of appeals to order. If we could please call the roll.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Ms. Pacheco?
Present.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Hope?
Here.
Mr. Baez?
Here.
Chairman Goodman?
Here. So we have seven members present. If the first order of business would be to approve the minutes from the January 20th, 2021 meeting, I would ask if there's a motion?
Yes, this is Kamran Dig. I move to approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. I would note that for also present, we have Ms. Finan as acting town attorney. Was she here last week or last month?
I was.
What? Okay. So that would then be correct. I would ask if we could, is there any further discussion on the motion?
Just a question. Who did you just ask if they were here?
Ms. Finan.
Okay, so she was there last time?
Yes.
Okay.
I would, is there further discussion? I would ask if we could call a roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Abstain.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Abstain.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Baez?
Yes.
And Chairman Goodman?
Yes, the minutes are passed.
Chairman Goodman, this is Keith Frary. Am I assuming that I'm now not needed for the meeting?
Well, we had started when you weren't here, but you are a member, so you would take precedence in the proceeding over an alternate.
I would also remind the chairman that last meeting we waited until about 5:00 after for some people to connect, so I would appreciate the same courtesy. I was having some connection issues, so.
I apologize.
All right. So this is Kamran Dig. I'm going to step out then.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I would ask if we could please call the first case.
Appeal of Robin Gagnon, Agent for J-Dog Junk Removal for a variance from Section 220-18A3 for the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 398 Anthony Street, Niskuna, New York, located in the IG General Industrial Zoning District, to construct a carport that exceeds the maximum height for accessory structures. Section 220-18A3 states unless otherwise specified, accessory structure shall not exceed 15 feet in height. The site plan indicates a peak height of the carport of 21 feet 6 inches. Therefore, an area variance of 6 feet 6 inches is necessary for the height of the accessory structure. Six notices were mailed out, zero were received. The county center referral deferring to local consideration and the planning board sent in a referral which Laura will read.
On January 25th, the planning board made the following recommendations to the zoning board. The effect on the comprehensive plan, the planning board and zoning commission unanimously agreed that there is no effect on the comprehensive plan. This property lies within the IG General Industrial Zoning District. For suitability of use, the board's recommendation is that it is a suitable use for the following reasons. The property is when the IG zoning district, the carport will organize and improve the visual appearance of the property. It will prevent waste because the covered trucks will keep the contents dry and protected from water damage and thereby encourage recycling and reuse. And it fits within the current structures in the area, including the J-Dog building, which is higher than the proposed carport, and it will have little to no impact on the surrounding residences or businesses. For the recommendation, the planning board and zoning commission recommended granting the area variance.
Thank you. Did we have any correspondence from the community?
There was zero responses from the community.
I would ask if the applicant could please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record, as well as setting forth your application and what efforts were made to mitigate the need for a variance or the size of the variance.
Hi, my name is Robin Gagnon and the property address is 398 Anthony Street, Niskuna, New York, 12308. As Laura said, it's in an industrial zone. We don't really, we can't, there's no way to mitigate the size, the height of the carport because it needs to be a certain height for the pitch, for the snow, for the weight of the snow and wind and all that, correct?
Yep.
And our trucks are a standard height of 10 feet and that's standard for the industry, so I can't make it any lower because that's how high our trucks are. And because we are a junk removal company. And as Laura stated, when we met with the planning board, we do a lot of recycling, repurposing, reusing, we donate. And with COVID, we wind up holding things longer now in our warehouse. And when our trucks come back at night, they need a place to be able to park underneath so snow, ice, rain, wind, debris, things like that don't get on them. And then one other problem we were having is people realized that we were down there and started using, coming at night, just people in the community and using our dumps and our bins as dumpsters. So we were ending up with other people's waste in our bins because they just sit in our yard. So that's why we would like to put a carport up. We made sure it was dark green so it would blend with the trees around the area. But there's, we're really the last building on the right at the end of a dirt road. We're not even on a paved road.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said, thank you for your presentation. And yes, there were questions from the board.
Ms. Gagnon? This is John Doggs speaking. How are you?
Hi, good. How are you?
I'm just trying to get around, if the standard height is 10 feet, that's the standard size of your trucks. Why you need an additional 11 feet? I understand you said you had to deal with the pitch and that was the only way that could be, the structure could be constructed to accommodate the pitch. Is that correct?
So the structure itself at the base is only 14 feet high, which you need a few feet to be able to get those trucks in to maneuver them to, if somebody needs to climb up the side and look into them, you need to have some room. They can't be touching the trucks. So there's only three, four feet there. But because of the pitch at the very center of the building is the only place that it's over the height. On this, as it slopes down, the peak, the peak is where it's over by six and a half feet. But as it slopes down, it goes, at the ends, it's only 14 feet.
Thank you for clarifying.
It's an A-frame type thing.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question. This is Katrina Pacheco from Ms. Gagnon. Good evening. And a question about the structure. Was there, did you look at perhaps making it a shed structure so that it would have a shorter pitch to the backside so that you wouldn't be approaching the height restriction?
So to have it, to order one properly made that will withstand the weather, the wind, the snow, the weight of the snow, that's all in the plans that I had submitted. It needs to be that size. So we didn't contract anybody to come and build it and just, you know, try to figure that. We went with a company and that's all they built. So they build them, they, they're weather rated for what part of the United States you're in, you know, even north, northern to southern New York are different ratings. So that's the size that it has to be according to the experts to safely house the trucks. And we have seven trucks. So it has to be long and, you know, which actually made it shorter. The longer it is, the shorter it would be, the short, you know, the closer to the ground, I guess I'm trying to say, right? What the, the pitch isn't as high.
No, the, yeah, not quite wrong.
Oh, well, okay, you go ahead. I can't explain it then. This is Kyle, my son. He's working with me. Sorry, I'm not good at that kind of stuff.
If you could just state your full name for the record.
Yes, my name is Kyle Gagnon.
Thank you.
I was trying to say, if it's longer, it's got to be taller. But no, go ahead.
It does.
Okay, go ahead. I don't know, but.
Yeah, so the pitch is just the standard pitch that has to be, that is zoned for the wind and the snow in this area.
Okay, I guess my question was more about, it seems to be pitching to the sides of the structure. Is that correct? It can't slope to the back, for example?
If it sloped to the back, we're off the property line like by 10 feet. So if we slope to the back, that's going into a natural stream. We kept the pitch on our property. So that when the water ran off, it ran onto our property, not into that natural stream that runs behind there. I didn't want to do that. I thought that would be, I didn't like that idea.
Thank you.
Just in case something fell on the, you know, like branches, whatever, if something had caught in that stream, I didn't want that.
Thank you for the explanation.
Sure, sure. Sorry I messed it up.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the public who wishes to be heard for or against this application?
Mr. Goodman, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Richard Green speaking. Just thought, did you have an opportunity to ascertain the approximate cost of an enclosed building as opposed to the approximate cost of the carport that you're proposing?
Well, I didn't want an enclosed building for many reasons. And, you know, one of them is the guys are backing their trucks into there every single night. And I just thought it would be safer and easier for them to be able to back their trucks in. An enclosed building, I think, would have to be bigger and I know it'd be more money.
It would, yeah. It would depend on whether or not you were just talking about a similar type steel structure that just had the front on it. The cost would have been, I did look at that, I think it would have been about 25% higher than that. But if we're talking about an actual traditionally constructed building, I mean, we're talking about astronomically more money versus a steel structure. We didn't, we didn't even look into that because I knew the construction cost would be way higher than what we could have afforded.
Very good.
Sorry, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions, any further questions from the board? Anyone in the public wishing to be heard for or against this application? I would ask if any board members wish to make a motion? Mr. Hope, you're on mute.
I'm dealing with some issues in my house currently. I was yelling at the dogs, so.
Oh. I will make a motion that we grant the variance, the benefit that can be sought cannot be made by any other method. We do have the recommendation. It's been through the planning board. The building requirements are such that you need a certain height for the pitch for safely having the snow and wind for the property. There needs to be clearance for the trucks that are being put in. So we're talking about the lower height needs to be more than the 10 feet of the trucks. And then you add the pitch, so they need that. There would be no other alternative. The applicant has investigated other alternatives. This is not going to create any detriment to the nearby properties or change the environmental area of the location. The need for a variance has not been self-created and there's not going to be any physical or environmental effects on the area. For these reasons, I'll make a motion that we approve the variance. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if the clerk could please call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Yes, for the reason stated.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for a reason stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reason stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reason stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reason stated.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, for the reason stated.
Chairman Goodman?
Yes, for the reasons that I had previously stated. The variance is granted. I want to thank you for taking the time to join us this evening.
And thank you all very much. We appreciate it. Have a good night.
You as well.
Thank you.
If we could call the next case, please?
Appeal of Dennis Ryan for a variance from Section 220-18B2, Section 220-25A4, and Section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 2421 Rosendale Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, to maintain a six-foot fence that exceeds the number of allowable accessory structures on the property, exceeds the height limit in the side yard, and does not comply with the ornamental side of the fence facing away from the lot. Section 220-18B2 states that there shall not be more than two accessory structures on a lot. There are currently three accessory structures on the property, a garage, a pool, and a pool deck. As constructed, the fence is the fourth accessory structure. Therefore, a variance to maintain one additional accessory structure is required. Fence Section 220-25A4 requires the ornamental side of any fence, if there is an ornamental side, to face away from the lot on which it is located. As constructed, the ornamental side of the fence faces toward the lot on which it is located. Therefore, a variance is required. Fence Section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height of fences to be located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As constructed, a six-foot high fence is located in the side yard. Therefore, a two-foot fence height variance is required. Six notices were mailed out and two responses received.
So the first response is from Daniel Bratt at 2436 Rosendale Road, and he writes, "We have no issues with Mr. Ryan's fence. It looks good, and there are no other houses near this property, just an empty lot. The easement for this town's 46-inch sewer line is also adjacent to his property to the west, and I doubt anyone would be able to build there, which brings me to my next concern. I am more concerned with the future of that three-acre lot that was split off from this original property, Mr. Ryan's, prior to the sale, and now remains vacant." Daniel Bratt, 2436 Rosendale Road. The second comment I have is from Peter and Nancy Cornell, but I believe they were going to try and attend the meeting and speak. I can read the comment, or if they're here, obviously they would go when the chairman is asking for, is Nancy or Peter Cornell on the line?
We're both on, but if you don't mind, just please go ahead and read our letter.
Okay. I am a life, this is from Peter and Nancy Cornell, 2432 Rosendale Road. "I am a lifelong resident of Niskuna, and I have lived at 2432 Rosendale Road for over 40 years. 2421 is directly across the street from our home. This is the first owner in decades to take pride in his home. The Ryans are constantly improving the property. We have endured everything from neglected maintenance, noisy, and considerate people, as well as drug busts and arrests for a variety of ordinances at all hours of the day and night from their previous owners and tenants. That said, the Ryan family is a welcome addition to our neighborhood, and we vigorously support the Ryan zoning variance request. Respectfully, Peter and Nancy Cornell."
I would ask if the applicant could please come forward, state your name and address, and set forth your application. You have a number of variances. If you could, on the record, set forth what you have done to see what you can do to mitigate the need for a variance or the size of the variance for each of the separate variances that you're requesting.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Dennis Ryan, and I have the fence. My property is 95 feet off the front of Rosendale Road. So the fence starts at my house, where my house starts, which is almost 95 feet off the road. They have to be right on top of my house to actually see the fence. And you can only see it from, if you're driving northbound on Rosendale, you can see the fence when you're right on top of my property. On the other side, it's nothing but woods there. That's why I put the ornamental side towards the property. There's, there's nothing there but woods and a farm, and no one really had any problems with it. The two-foot part of it, six feet, comes in for a little privacy. Like you said, I do have a pool there and a pool deck. And when we're on the pool deck, we can see down into the farm. And, you know, at times there's people working there. And on dry days, the wind blows up out of them fields and just covers the side of my house, my pool, with dust and soot. So we wanted privacy. One is the fence, we're getting a lot of animals back here, foxes and coyotes and kai dogs and, and whatever else is out there. And they're coming up into the yard. So it gives us a little fear in the summer evenings when we're out there. The six-foot fence kind of keeps them away. And my, my real plan is to line that, I need the fence either way to keep the animals out. But my, my plan is to line it with evergreens. So you won't even really see it when you're up close on my house. But evergreens are $80 to $100 a bush, and it would take me six evergreens to cover one stockade section of fence. So with that being said, I need some time to do that. I don't know what else to do. You know, the, the house is wide open and there's that wooded area there. Trees are dying. It's damp down in there. We get a stench of odor at times. I'm just asking if I can keep this fence and keep the ornamental side towards me. And my plan is to eventually put evergreens in front of the fence, but I still want to keep the fence.
Okay. I had a couple of questions with regard to the height of the fence. You said that you want to keep animals out and you want to keep dust out. How does the two-foot difference assist in keeping dust out? Do you have any evidence that the dust from the farm stays under six feet? And how is that difference in size going to keep a fox or another animal out of the property of the four-foot fence with that?
Well, the six-foot fence is more for privacy as dust. It, the property comes up on a hill, so to speak. About 20 feet behind the fence, it starts sloping down. And when, and so the wind brings it up higher than four feet. And the same thing as far as the privacy. You know, when there's people working in the fields out there, not, not to say that they're watching us or anything, but, you know, it gets a little uncomfortable trying to be on your pool deck and swimming. And you can see everybody out into the field, workers, so on.
Were there more trees on the property in the area of the fence when you first purchased it?
Was there more trees?
Yeah.
I cut a few, I cut a few trees down, yes.
So that affected the privacy as well?
It, not exactly. The trees I cut down were falling down. In fact, one of them fell, it must have been probably over 100 feet tall, a pine. There's a lot of pines back there. And they were just splitting. And, and a couple of them had fallen at times. So the ones that had to come down, I had to take down.
Okay. Any members of the board have questions?
Yeah, quick question, Mr. Chairman. This question for Laura first and then for the applicant. Laura, I remember this property a couple of years ago. They had a variance for something. Do you recall what it was for?
This property came before you because the previous owner had this house rented, and he was trying to subdivide the rear property. And the two lots that he was trying to subdivide in to the, to the rear required, they were almost like little keyhole lots. So they required area of variances for the frontage on Rosendale Road. And it was denied when you guys saw that.
I remember denying, but I couldn't remember what we denied, if it's the same fence or not. So.
No, it was actually more related to the vacant parcel to the right. It was all kind of one thing when you were looking at it before.
Okay.
Was that vacant parcel separated from this piece?
It was at the time, but because he owned both of it, I think he was changing the lot lines of this piece a little bit too. So it was all included.
Okay, thank you.
I do recall the neighbors being concerned with the usage of the property at that time.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Latif, if you want to continue?
Yeah, that's okay. I just want to make sure because I remember this, this address coming in front of us. So the question for the applicant, if I remember, it used to be a fence in the front back when we looked at it. Is the fence still there?
No, no. I spoke with Tommy Canizo. When I got the permit for the pool and the pool deck, I told Tommy what my plans were. And, and he said to me, he said, "Well, you know, you got a fence in the front." I took that fence down. Actually, there's bushes there, and there's, I think, six trees that I planted. So in the summertime, you can't even see the fence. The neighbor right alongside me on the same side of the street, he can't even see the fence. He can't even see my pool. I wrapped my pool with the evergreens as well. So, so, and on the wooded side, if you have pictures there, I could ask you to show me where the fence is even located. On the wooded side, you can't even see the fence. If you're traveling south, and this is a picture taken in November, if you're traveling south on Rosendale, if you have any pictures there that I sent in, you can't even see the fence. You can see maybe two sections of it, just a couple feet high of it. But, and this is in the fall. In the summertime, you can't even see it. And then, and then, and then after that little ways, that's where the privacy comes in. I got about probably, I want to say 80, 90 feet of the fence. It doesn't go all the way back to the end of the property. Just goes to the edge of my pool. And when you get, when you get about 50 feet back from where the fence starts, then there's no more woods. That's where the farm is all open, and that's where I need the privacy.
Okay. The fence I was referring to, the one goes from the side of the house. It used to be a white fence.
Yep, it's gone.
It's gone. So now, tell me, right now, all you're trying to do is keep the six-foot fence parallel to the house. You're not trying to connect it with the house. Is that right?
No, right, exactly. Yep.
Okay, so it's, for the pool, it's wide open right now from Rosendale. You could walk right in then, right?
Exactly, yes, yes.
Are you planning to put a four-feet fence in there? Or, or what's your plan? Because this is, will come back in front of the board if, if you were gonna get another variance to do it. Because you're looking today just for what you have in there between the two properties.
Right, right, right. Yeah, no, out in front, I don't want a fence. I'm not, you know, I, yeah, I don't, I'm gonna line that area from the edge of the house over to the fence with bushes. Where that white picket fence used to be?
Yes.
I'm gonna line that with evergreens for privacy. I don't want to put a fence up there. I want it to be natural and nature looking.
So today, you're looking for the six-foot fence, the one you have between the farmer and your house, the, the parallel. And that started in the beginning of your house, right to the side of your house?
Exactly, right, right. And once again, like I said, it's, my house is 95 feet off the road. So the fence is 75 to 80 feet away from the road. So the fence is seventy-five to eighty feet away from the road.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Green, you were looking to ask a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good, this is Richard Gury. Good evening, Mr. Ryan.
Hi.
I'm wondering if you could uh provide us with your best estimate of how long it will take you to plant the line of evergreens?
And and on alongside the fence?
Yes, sir, as you indicated in your discussion.
I'm probably gonna need probably two seasons. I want to do, I want to go from the beginning of the fence about halfway back, so you can't see the fence for uh this this spring. And then I'll probably do the last half next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Keith Ferrari. Uh, hi, Mr. Ryan, um, Keith Ferrari here. A question for you, I'm and maybe I'm just confused on this. I'm looking at the map that you drew. You you you, one of the things you're looking for is you have too many accessory structures. You got, you'd have a pan, a full, uh, pool, a fence, uh, what, we had a garage and a deck. Uh, the this pool deck, is it connected to your pool?
Uh, it's it it, well, it it's not connect, it can't be connected to the pool. The pool is an above-ground pool, but it is right up to the the edge of the pool, yes.
Laura, I thought if the pool deck was connected to the pool or was right up to the pool, it was just one accessory structure.
I had thought that too. We looked at that when we were looking at the property that actually fronted on Van Antwerp and another parcel. And um, I said that to you guys. And then I talked to the building inspector about it and he said, no, they're not connected. And so she ended up changing her variance to, because you called that one, I remember that. Um, but actually, per New York State zoning code, the deck and the swimming pool count as two. And when you had said that, we tried to figure out if it needed a setback variance or a multiple structure variance. It ended up meeting a multiple structure variance because we decided the pool and the deck are two separate accessory structures.
So am I mistaken, but we had been operating prior to that time that the the those, the deck and the pool were one structure?
I know, I think I just confused that whole meeting. I think previously we had treated them as two accept separate structures. And when we looked at it and figured it out, we realized that it was um, that we had, that we had missed a um, a call on that one.
No, it it, that that's not really my concern. My concern is is, uh, and I'm stating this in the affirmative. We have treated a deck against a pool as one structure. I know we have because this issue's arisen before. But what you're telling me is for the zoning, the the New York State zoning, um, whatever ordinances, that there are two structures.
Yeah, because they actually aren't attached. That's what he said is correct. They are freestanding. You could take the pool down and keep the deck, not that you would, but you could.
I understand, we're splitting hairs now. The pool, the deck is up against the pool, that's why I'm saying it. And I I I I am not not sure that uh it's a distinction without a difference. Mr. Ryan, um,
Yeah.
If I understand correctly, the fence, you turned around so that the finished side was pointing toward the pool because there wasn't anything on the other side. It was an empty lot that can't be built built upon. Uh, you can't really see it because of the woods, that type of thing, is that fair?
Yes, yes, that's fair.
Okay.
Exactly, yep.
All right, and this is the, now that the that the the white fence Mr. Latif was was referring to was removed. This is, is this the only piece of fence you have on the property?
That is it, yep, that's the only one.
No, you're you're not, uh, not not that you would need to get permission to do it, but you're not uh connecting the um, the fence, you're not fencing in the back at all or anything of that sort?
No, no, nothing, nothing.
Now, it's a little deceiving as I look at the picture, but if you, could you estimate for me how much of distance-wise of the fence? I assume your fence starts at the front corner of the house, right? I think you said?
Yes, yes.
And approximately, how deep is the house? In other words, from the front corner to the back corner on the side of the house, how how far is that distance?
I I never measured it, but I probably, I I would want to say fifty to maybe sixty feet.
Okay, and the entire distance of the fence, is it, is it, was, is how far did you say?
It goes a little farther, it's probably eighty feet.
Okay, so it essentially just covers this, the, a little bit beyond the back corner of the house?
Yes, exactly, yep.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I had a question with regard to the placement of the fence. If the fence is in the backyard instead of the side yard, it doesn't need to, it can be six feet. How close are you to the back edge of the house so that you wouldn't even need a variance?
Uh, I'm probably three sections. So I'm, let's see, eight, eight, I'm probably twenty-four feet, about twenty, twenty, twenty to twenty-five feet.
And that twenty, twenty-five feet, how does that affect the area that you're trying to protect against?
It's, you know, to be honest with you, it's probably, I probably don't have as much concern in that area as I do, you know, directly behind the house um, with the side, because that is, it is heavily wooded there. The only thing that I have there, I brought the fence all the way up because um, behind the first section of fence are two uh, two propane tanks, which are used for the heater of the pool.
So could that section be four feet with the rest of it six feet?
I I would say it could be, it it could be a couple of sections, four feet, then turn into six feet.
Okay.
I just went ahead, well, well, the tanks are, the tanks would show a little bit, I suppose. The tanks are probably about five feet high.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Any comments or questions from anyone in the public? Hearing that, I would ask if any board members wish to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, before we make the motion, are you, you made a recommendation that uh he moves it to the back of the house. Are we approving it from the front or from the back?
Well, in the back of the house, he wouldn't need a variance. So if we didn't approve, if if we did not approve the six-foot variance, the portion in the back, he would be able to continue to be at six feet. The portion of the front or within the side yard would have to be reduced.
Okay, well, your question to the applicant was if he's willing to go to four feet and he said yes.
Yes, he wants to have propane tanks.
Right, right, that's the only problem with that, is the propane tanks would stick out.
Okay, so we're we're making a motion on the six feet.
Six feet, four, five feet, if you wanted to. I'll leave that up to the members of the board as to what kind of motions they wish to make.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna deal with all three of the 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 variances that are actually, to to my mind, connected. Um, I'm gonna move that we approve the variance. Uh, we have traditionally been very reluctant to grant uh, variances relating to fencing unless there's unique circumstances. This is a property that's been before this board before. Um, as as Mr. Latif mentioned, we've we've had issues in terms of tenants living there. So, you know, subdividing keyhole lots, all kinds of things. Um, I I would applaud Mr. Ryan for the the, what I would view to be improvements that he's made to the house and the area, it looks nice. The reason I'm moving to grant the variance is because, first of all, I think the the variance relating to the finished side not being turned outward. Uh, my understanding, the purpose of that particular variance is so that the neighbors are looking at the nice side of the house and the applicant is looking at the not-so-nice side of the fence. The applicant's looking at the less-nice side of the fence. That's not really an issue in this case. The the they're, first of all, it's shielded, from the photos, shielded by the woods. Second of all, it's uh the the, that side of the house, you can't even really see. And it's a vacant lot that slopes down. Uh, and again, as I said, is shielded. So I think that's really a non-issue. I think in this circumstance, which is unique and and I don't know that we've ever run into this issue before under these circumstances. I think it's reasonable for the nice side of the fence to be towards uh the applicant's house. In terms of the accessory structures, again, as I discussed with Laura, I I I understand what evidently is the 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 uh standing ordinance or the standing rule here that the deck and the uh pool are considered two structures. But I think uh from a practical standpoint, I think they go hand in hand. They are side by side and I'm not so concerned as we would be if there was a freestanding separate structure as opposed to a connected one. Um, so I I I don't have as big a concern with that. The six-foot fence issue, I think the applicant has enumerated a a fairly good reason for having it there. Um, he lives there, I don't, so I'm I'm willing to accept his explanation for reasons, I mean, obviously, there's a farm nearby. Obviously, it's an active farm nearby and it is, uh, you know, it has livestock and is tended. And I'm sure that uh uh the the security issue or at least the uh the privacy issue is a uh reasonable request. I don't think there's an environmental issue. Uh, the applicant's attempting to uh plant some some bushes, some shrubs to lessen the appearance of the fence. Um, he he's not intruding on the on the the, what appears to be the vacant lot, which is, I believe, was uh an easement there. Um, I think that it's not going to change the characteristic of the neighborhood. In fact, I think the fact that he's he's taking the time to put something up that looks nice is a great improvement over what was there. For those reasons, I'm gonna move that we grant all the variances related to this property.
Has been a motion made, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna second the motion uh for all the reasons stated by Mr. Ferry and also the willingness of the applicant to to work with the board. And I want to make sure uh we're only approving uh uh the fence to the side and it's not connecting to the house.
That's correct. A motion has been made and seconded, is there discussion on the motion? Hearing that, I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reasons which have been stated, I will also vote yes, the variances are granted. I want to thank you for your time this evening as well as your neighbors who came out this evening and taking their time.
Can I thank everybody for being understanding and and, you know, in regards to myself and my family, we thank you all for being understanding and you won't be sorry.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
If we could please call the next case?
The appeal of Dina and Dean Maloney, moving in from section two twenty dash four, section two twenty dash eighteen A two, section two twenty dash eighteen B three B, and section two twenty dash thirteen Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Missuna as it applies to the property at fifty-six Brendan Lane, Missuna, New York, located in the R one low-density residential zoning district. Brendan Estates was approved for use of R two medium-density residential zoning district setback. To construct a twelve-foot by eighteen-foot shed in the front yard and partially within a front and front and rear yard setback, section two twenty dash four states that for corner lot, each street line shall be considered a front lot line. The property fronts on two streets, Brendan Lane and Hamlin Lane. Section two twenty dash eighteen A two states, except otherwise specified in this chapter, accessory structures are not permitted in the front yard of any lot. As proposed, the shed is located in the front yard along Hamlin Lane. Therefore, the location of the shed is in the front yard and requires a variance. Section two twenty dash eighteen B three C states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structure shall be the same as applies to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of a hundred and twenty square feet, the shed at two hundred and sixteen square feet is a major accessory structure. Section two twenty dash thirteen Schedule IC establishes the minimum front yard setback at thirty feet and the minimum rear yard setback at twenty feet. As proposed, the shed has a twenty-one-foot front yard setback along Hamlin Lane and a ten-foot rear yard setback. Therefore, both a nine-foot front yard setback variance and a ten-foot rear yard setback variance are required. Eight notices were mailed out, one response was received.
If we could, oh, Laura, you'll read the response?
Yeah, this this letter is from fifty-three Brendan Lane. Um, and they write, to whom it may concern, I am writing regarding the appeal for a variance from the zoning ordinance setback requirements made by Dina and Dean Maloney residing at fifty-six Brendan Lane. I have no objection and fully support their request for relief from their required front and rear yard setbacks. Allowing a twenty-foot setback along Hamlin Lane and a ten-foot rear yard setback for their proposed shed is completely reasonable with little to no impact. Sincerely, Donald Schuer, fifty-three Brendan Lane.
Okay. I have a quick question about that street. It's not completely a paved street because it is paved, but it's just a short stub. Sometimes those are done for future interconnectivity. But the areas, I understand that behind this is a wildlife refuge of sorts, I don't know. It's a wildlife area. Am I correct? Laura, you're on mute.
Yeah, I'm having momentary computer problems here.
Okay.
Um, that area.
Mr. Chairman, I believe it's a bird sanctuary.
It's a bird sanctuary area. Um, is that something that, eh, in your knowledge, the town would ever be looking at connecting that road over to either a new road or towards Consul Road?
So that area is adjacent to the bird sanctuary, but it is currently privately owned. Um, I did not, I can, I can take a look at that subdivision plan. Um, we, it's privately owned, so it could theoretically be developed in the future.
Okay, and that would have, that would have been left there for an interconnectivity, I assume?
Yeah, I can probably, if you guys want, yeah, I can pull up the subdivision plan. If you can see here. Sometimes they put a note on it. Yeah, so the reserved open space for that subdivision is to the east. And that parcel is 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 a very large parcel, but it is under private ownership right now.
Okay. The bird sanctuary area, that's a, that's private as well, isn't it?
It is private, but I believe it's deed restricted. Um, yeah, it was part of the sale, so that should, I could double check, but would be forever.
If you know, if you know, Laura, is that lot, the large lot you just described, is it essentially landlocked? Is this the only way you could get into it was on Hamlin Road or what, Hamlin Lane?
No.
Or possibly Consul?
Definitely not. Here's the, um, this is the subdivision that shows where they put in Hamlin Lane there. But this is the parcel, let me just. Let me just, I'll just zoom out a little bit more. This guy, it flashes. This guy here is the bird sanctuary. That one that just turns green.
Right, okay.
This one here is the privately owned parcel. And yeah, it has a lot of frontage here on Consul Road.
That's Consul that runs through there. Okay, I see.
This, this is owned by the town, so these two pieces here, and then the bird sanctuary here. And then you have that connection there.
I'm sorry, where's Hamlin?
Hamlin is this little guy right here.
Oh, okay, I see, okay.
Okay. I would ask if the applicant could come forward, state your name and address, your application, the reasons for it, what efforts you made to mitigate either the need for the variances or the size of the variance.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Can you guys hear me okay? Just testing the audio.
Yes.
Awesome, great. So my name is Dean Maloney, reside at 56 Brendan Lane, Niskuna, 12309. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to everyone this evening. So just to provide a little bit of context, you know, my wife and I bought the house two years ago. We plan on living in Niskuna for the long term and starting our family here. So with that, we created the vision for the house and the yard. But the vision that we created, it requires a lot of storage space, which leads to the reasons why we filed for the building permit, where we currently lack the proper storage capacity to properly maintain the property today, that, you know, using our riding lawnmower, snow blower, pressure washer, leaf blower, et cetera, and our needs for the future, which could include future kids' sporting equipment, patio furniture, garden supplies, et cetera. Currently, as you guys know, we don't have a shed in the backyard. However, they do appear to be standard in our neighborhood and our current storage today is limited to our 20 by 22-foot garage that is just big enough to fit our two vehicles. So actually, we store outside lawn furniture in my brother's garage for the winter, just because we don't have the space for it. The reason for the variance, however, is that we want to do this once and we want to do it the right way. So, you know, we contemplated getting a smaller shed, but unfortunately, that would just partially address our current needs. We want to approach the board once, as I mentioned, with a beautiful, well-designed shed that fits the character of the neighborhood and fits the long-term needs. I do have a picture of this that I can share that I don't believe is part of the application. We think the variance is reasonable, a reasonable request, because, you know, as for mention, the front yard variance is due to the fact that we live on a, on a, what I thought was a paper street, you know, and in the location that we're proposing, it's actually currently tucked away by trees to stay out of the closest physical proximity, the neighbor of the closest proximity's view. And secondly, the rear setback variance, we think is reasonable because the property is, you know, next to several acres of undeveloped wooden land, so a shed would not negatively impact our neighbor's property. In addition, we've gotten, you know, in addition to the written notice that Laura read, we've got three other verbal confirmations from our neighbors and, you know, their approval of this proposal. You know, my wife and I think this is a great option for us. We've taken the time to thoughtfully design a shed that will match our house, you know, with the same color siding, et cetera. So we think it'll be a real asset to the property. So if, you know, any questions or concerns, we are more than happy to address them tonight.
Did you consider moving it to, because looking at your property, the shed would be in the rear but on the right-hand side, which is where the street is that could or could not be a future street? Did you consider it to the other side, so it would be a true side yard situation?
Yeah, we did consider that and the reason we didn't is because that would decrease the proximity to the closest neighbor. So by placing it on the other side, we're just kind of keeping it as far away and out of view as the neighbor. So like I said, in the other part, in the current location, proposed location, it's actually tucked away by trees, so it's completely out of view from the now closest, proposed closest neighbor in proximity.
Mr. Maloney, this is Keith Frery.
Hi.
I'm just trying, I'm looking at the diagram of your yard here and I'm trying to, the, where the streets are shown, I think we're probably looking at the same thing and you've got the shed drawn there. Chairman Goodman asked if you could move it, you know, directly south, which is to the left of this drawing. Where is the closest neighbor on what looks like lot number 18 there?
Yeah, so I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, but I do have Google, yeah, so that works too. So the, directly below is lot 18, right there. As opposed to the neighbor on the other side of Hamlin Lane.
Okay, but I guess my question is, is it appears, and I know these are all, you know, it's visually possibly inaccurate, but these appear to be deeper lots, your house is to the front of the lot towards Brendan Lane, correct?
Correct.
The neighbor that's, that looking, as I'm standing on Brendan Lane, looking at your house, the neighbor to the left, is their house similarly situated on the lot? In other words, it's to the front of the lot towards Brendan Lane?
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay, so if you took Mr. Goodman's suggestion and you moved the shed over to the left and where you would not need, you wouldn't have an issue with it being in the front yard? And trust me, I understand your situation. Where I live, I'm on River Road and I have two front yards as well. But if you move the shed to the left, while I think it's, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, it doesn't appear that it's, it's not going to intrude on your neighbor that much. Your neighbor, if their house is in the front, is, I mean, there's no trees in between your lot and their lot, right?
Uh, just to confirm, lot 18?
Yep.
Correct.
So even if they're standing at their house and looking back through your backyard, they could see the shed, right?
In lot 18, correct, yep.
Okay, so if you move the shed to the left, so you didn't, you didn't have it in a front yard, you had it in a true side yard, they can still see the shed, maybe see it, it's a little bit closer to their house than it would be in the other corner, but it eliminates some of the issues you have with variances.
Uh, so I hear what you're saying, I definitely do. I guess to question that, there's other reasons why we wanted it on the other side, you know, on that side of Hamlin Lane, we have a double wide open gate that's, you know, easier to then transport things in and out, you're not bringing it across the entire yard. The, that side of the yard, I think it's, you know, not of significant, but it's less level on that side of the yard. You see a little bit of elevation gain there on that side. And then I guess I'm not fully sure on what the, if, because if we bring it closer to that, in that corner of what you're saying, what impact that would have to the variance or the distance from that property line, which would then push it actually closer to the center of my property, which, you know, would, I think negatively impact the, you know, resale value and the layout of the yard.
If you use the four corners of your house, they determine what, where your quote-unquote yard lies. So the, as you're looking at your house from Brendan Lane, the right rear corner of your house directly back is where that quote-unquote second front yard runs, okay? You have one that runs in the front of your house to the front corner to corner up to Brendan Lane, and now you've got one on the side of the house from corner to corner, right corner, front, right corner, rear, all the way back. That's why where you've got the shed sitting, what seems like, guys, that's my backyard. It's not, okay? It's technically a front yard because it fronts a street.
Understood, yep.
What I'm suggesting is if you take where the shed is now and you move it to the left, are you still going to run into, you know, depending on where you put it, you may or may not run into property line issues. You may still have a tenth need for a variance in the back if you position it sort of in the same position, but in the left rear corner. My point is, is you don't, you're in a side yard now, so you don't run into that issue. Maybe a little bit more palatable, I think whether it's in the right corner or the left corner, it's not going to change the resale of your house. How far back is it from the house itself where you're proposing to put the shed, you know?
Um, you know, I haven't actually measured that, to be honest with you, but just looking at the diagram, about, I would say, you know, 20 to 25 feet.
Okay. I get, you know, we're charged with looking at the least restrictive variance or, you know, if you need three variances, maybe we could get you down to two, to reduce what's required at some point. That's why I'm asking these questions and to see if you can still meet the need that you have and eliminate the need for, possibly eliminate the need for a variance. That's the only reason I'm asking the question.
Yeah, and, yeah, I totally appreciate it and see where you're coming from, absolutely. I guess another thing that pops into my head that I mentioned is the slight elevation grade difference in that would include a more cost for me to put the gravel stone down to make sure it's leveled. So it'd be an incurred cost to me there, but I do, I do understand what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question. Was there ever anything in that left back corner, looking at, you know, the technology we all have at our fingertips today, looking at both the Google Maps app as well as the Apple Maps app? When I go to 3D, it looks like there was once something there.
Was that a question for me, Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so I moved into the house about two years ago, so I don't have the full historical knowledge of the property, but what I do know when I moved in, there was like a jungle gym playset there that is no longer there, so that was a pretty big structure. So that may be what you see in the...
That could be what I see. I cannot see it on a 2D image because it's under trees. On the 3D image, I could see something, but I really couldn't tell what I was looking at.
Yeah, I think that's what it was, that jungle gym set.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the applicant.
Yes, please go forward.
Thank you. This is Katrina Pacico. Good evening. I think I want to follow on Mr. Frery's question, fairly specifically, the setback from Hamlin Lane, I believe, needs to be, is stated as it's 30 feet and you're looking for a nine-foot variance there. Is there any way you could push the building nine feet south, very specifically to avoid having to ask for that variance?
Uh, definitely, and, you know, I, again, see where you guys are coming from. I guess the thought process in our end was, we actually do have, there's an easement along Hamlin Lane, so that I currently maintain, but there's, that kind of cuts in visually into the yard, so you tack on that additional there. But the primary reason which we chose that location, as I mentioned, was for the, the physical proximity was the greatest for all neighbors involved. And within that location, the proposed location as it stands now, it's tucked in the corner behind the trees, so it's, it's really out of view unless you really go into your backyard for lot 18, and it's completely out of view for the neighbor on the other side of Hamlin Lane. So that was our thought process going into that proposed location.
Okay, I appreciate your concern for the view of your neighbors, but again, I'm looking for you to work with us on reducing the amount of variance that you're asking for, seeing that this lane could potentially be developed or the property on the other side of it could eventually be developed. So I just want to ask, you know, are you willing to work with us to reduce that variance request?
Yeah, so more than willing to work with the board here, because I definitely hear your concerns. I guess, you know, to me, it's obviously not ideal because I didn't propose it, but I think ultimately negatively impacts our use, the efficiency of our use of our backyard in the vision we have outlined there, but, yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I got a quick question to the applicant. You mentioned the gate that would give you easy access to the shed when you were talking to Mr. Frery. Can you explain to me what gate you were talking about?
Yeah, so I do have, you know, vinyl fence that was put on prior to me purchasing the home, so that the shed, although you're technically on the front yard, is within the vinyl fencing, right? So that's also, it's a four-foot vinyl fence, so it won't completely obstruct the view, but it is a divider, a physical divider. So that, there's a double wide gate that is eight, in eight feet wide when you open it. So when looking at use cases such as, you know, moving equipment from my garage to the shed, wheelbarrows, bringing out the yard waste cans, it's that ease of use for me there, so that location is also...
Where is that, where is that gate compared to your garage and the new shed you're asking for?
Yeah, so, great question. I guess it's probably right in the middle of the back of the garage and to the front of the shed when you include the width of it, so that the 12 feet, it's probably right in the middle.
Okay, so if you do reduce your variance a little bit from the nine feet, you will be closer to the gate, is that true?
No, because nine feet, if we increase the variance from nine feet, we move it south, so it moves it, on the plot plan, to the left, so then that will increase the distance from the double gate by that.
Okay, how about if you, how about if you move it toward the garage, the two feet?
Yeah, so it would be, in theory, closer to the, not in theory, it would be closer to the gate, but then would intrude into, more into the yard itself.
Okay. So, not to repeat ourselves, but since now you know what we're looking at, we're trying to reduce it a little bit, are you willing to amend it for anything beside what you're requesting?
Yeah, I, you know, as I stated, we have a vision, we currently have a problem, we don't have the right storage capacity today, so the goal is to definitely work with the board to ensure that, you know, both parties are happy, so.
Well, what would you, what would you, we can't tell you because the only thing we can do is either vote on it yes or no, but you have the chance right now, if you would like to amend it to, to reduce your variance to us and then we can vote on that.
Difficult, yeah, so I would, I would like to keep it as is if possible.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone in the public wish to be heard for or against the application? I would ask if any members of the board wish to make a motion. Hearing none, I will make a motion. I will make a motion that we accept the rear setback application so that he can have it closer to his rear setback, but that the side setback and the front yard not be granted. My reason for that is that it does have a potential change in the environment. The issue of whether or not that land will ever be developed seems like it's abstract, but I know that there are cases where we have these stubs, roads put in and then there is a later development. I think there's one happening right now off of Balltown Road, if I'm correct. So it's not an abstract situation and it would affect, and it could become a road that people are using to get to their home. The statute does envision that these sheds be more in the backyard and it could come in the front yard and would have an environmental impact. Beyond that, I would say that the, because it is currently wooded and a new development would take into account what is already there, that it will not have a significant environmental that it will not have a significant environmental impact or change in the neighborhood to have the shed ten feet from the property line rather than twenty feet from the property line in the rear, and will not have an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood to do so. That the applicant would not be able to re, meet his needs without having the shed more into the middle of his backyard if we didn't grant that ten-foot variance. And there would be no other way for him to meet his needs other than having two small sheds, which he could put in that place, but would be a greater detriment to the neighborhood than one well-designed larger shed. The applicant, the need is self-created, but that alone does not mean that we cannot accept the variance. So with the limitation of the one variance, I would make that motion. Is there a second?
Chairman, can I just have you clarify um, the, there's actually three variances? So there's the rear, the, the front yard and then the side or an accessory structure in the front.
I, I would only be doing the rear variance because if the shed was put on the left-hand side rather than the right-hand side, we would not need the front yard variance or that other setback variance.
Okay, because the house isn't sitting exactly on the thirty-five-foot setback, so it's probably then moving the shed not nine feet, but probably like eleven feet or twelve.
Or it could be.
In the front yard.
The other rear corner, right?
Yeah, so it'll have to match the rear corner of the house. You draw that, you know, back. That, that, that'll have to be contained within that so that it's not in a front yard.
Correct. Or if you put in the left-hand rear corner.
I'm gonna second, I'm gonna second the motion that's made, not only for the reasons stated by the chairman, but, but uh, we, we've proposed at least several alternatives which eliminate one, possibly two of the variances that are required uh, as, as we often and, and I think are required to do. Um, I, I sh, understand the unique situation presented by the two front yard issues. Um, but I think that uh, the applicant has some options to work within our zoning ordinances and eliminate or lessen the need. I, I think the fact that uh, with the wooded area behind granting the ten-foot uh, the, the, the setbacks that's required from the rear property line is reasonable, and I agree with the chairman. But I think the, having the uh, shed in the, in the quote-unquote "front yard" and the issue of uh, the necessity for a setback there, I think uh, there are other alternatives which provide for the lesser need for a variance. So uh, for the reasons stated by the chairman and that reason, I am going to second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if the clerk could please call the roll.
Mr. Freary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reasons I previously stated, I will vote yes. Sir, I want to thank you for your time this evening. One of the variances is granted. And I appreciate your coming out. If we could please call a case.
The appeal of Jennifer Littman for a variance from variance from the section two twenty-eighteen B three C of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at twenty-two-three Arcona Court, Niskuna, New York, located in the R-two median density residential zoning district, to convert an existing shed into a coop partially within the side yard setback, section two twenty-eighteen B three C states minor accessory structures are not permitted closer than five feet to the side or rear lot lines. As defined, minor accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures a hundred and twenty square feet or less in area. The coop at fifty-four square feet is a minor accessory structure as constructed. It is located four feet from the side lot line, therefore a one-foot side yard setback variance is required. Seventeen notices were mailed out, two responses were re, um, sent in the packet and they supported the proposal.
Mr. Robertson, are you gonna read those into the record?
Um, they were included in the packet. They're, they're form letters that people signed.
Yes, I did see those. Okay, I would add, and for clarification purposes, the, although this is talking about the chicken coop, the only issue before us is the variance for one foot. I would ask if the applicant could please come forward, set forth your name and address, your application and what efforts were made to see if you could mitigate the need for a variance.
Hi, uh, my name is Jenny Littman and uh, my address is two oh two-three Arcona Court. Um, and we, uh, we moved into this house um, about eleven years ago or so, and there was a shed in the backyard, which we have used to store our, some gardening materials and, and a lawnmower. And we were delighted when, when the, the new chicken laws came out and um, we thought it would be natural to just cut the shed in half and use part of it for the chickens. It's plenty big enough to how, to, to feed, to fit the requirements for the chickens. And we don't really use the whole thing, and so it seemed like a perfectly good solution. But then when I turned in my chicken application, we learned that um, uh, that I, I, I guess I had made my map with all the measurements and that, that's how I learned that our shed is out of step with the, the requirements for a, you know, an accessory structure. And it's approximately a foot off. Um, I don't really know where the property line is, and I actually talked to the, the former property owner and the way he said it, it, it would be actually less than, uh, less than a foot, um, you know, too close to the, to the property line, but it seems to, it's, you know, I, I, it's, it's clearly too close to the property line to be, to be consistent with code, and yet the shed has been there for over thirty years and um, the neighbors are both supportive of us getting chickens and leaving the shed where it's always been. So that's, that's the basic idea.
Always involved with your chicken application.
Number one, my daughter is going, trying to go to sleep here. Um, and number two, my son, did you see the picture of uh, our chicken farmers, future chicken farmers?
Yes, we got them today.
Yeah, yes, we did. Thank you.
We're hoping they can have some chicken chores and we can share some eggs with our neighbors and such.
Any questions from the warding application?
Yeah, this, this, Mr. Chairman, I got a couple of questions. Uh, Ms. Littman, uh, you mentioned the, the chicken uh, coop is gonna be to the east of the shed, is that correct?
Well, I'm sorry for the confusion. So the deal is, I would prefer to have them on the west side of the shed and then put the run like up against the fence. Um, then I was like a little unclear about some of the chicken code, which Laura clarified for me earlier in the week, so it would be much handier and, and less expensive and I think better in terms of shade for the chickens' run if I put them on the west side of the shed, but that would be the side closer to the neighbor's yard.
Okay.
Our clarification, does the, where the run is affect the variance at all?
No, it does not. She can put it on either side and it would be within code.
Thank you.
You're, you're using directionals and I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt Mr. Latif. I'm just, when you say the, the east and west sides, as I'm looking at the photograph uh, here, what is it we're talking? There's a fence on the left side in the photograph.
I would like to put it, I would like to put the chickens in the side of the, of the shed that is closer to the fence so that they can just walk out to a run that is, is between the fence and the shed, part of it. So I, I'd like to put it on the side that's closer to the fence.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that, that clarifies what I was reading about the east and west. So you're basically gonna have the coop closer to where the foot is needed uh, for the side setback, right? This has been changed according, and it doesn't matter.
Yeah, my original chicken application had them on that side, but then I, I wasn't sure if you would let me do that because I thought, well, if it's out of step, maybe I have to move away from this, the fence. But I, I'm sorry for all the confusion, but, but I would prefer to have them on the side that's closer to the fence, if that makes sense.
Any other questions from the board?
And, and just so we're clear, you're not changing the location, you're not changing anything, you're just, because of where it has existed for thirty years, you've discovered that it requires a variance.
Exactly. I don't want to move it. I mean, I think it's an old shed, it's a nice sturdy shed, but it would cost a lot of money and probably.
No, I'm not suggesting that you do. I'm just trying to make sure that I understand that it's not an issue of an addition to the shed, it's not an issue of moving the shed, it's just, it's been there for thirty years and the way it's situated, it requires a, a very small.
That's exactly right. I never would have even known that our shop, our shed was not per, per code if I hadn't applied for the chicken.
If it wasn't for the chickens.
Okay, I'm back, so I, I lost you guys for a second.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Anyone in the public wish to be heard for or against the application? I would ask if any members of the board wish to make a motion, having heard no questions from the public.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion. We approve this variance. Uh, I don't see any uh, other way to achieve this since that shed has been there for almost uh, three decades. Uh, the request is not substantial. Uh, and again, uh, the shed has been there for thirty years, so that's not a problem here. Uh, would it have any adverse physical uh, or environment effect? It will not have any. Uh, again, it all goes back. This shed has been there for three decades. Uh, is the alleged difficulty self-created? It's not self-created, uh, because again, uh, the shed has been there for thirty years and all they're trying to do is subdivide it to a chicken coop, and that's how they found out that it was a foot uh, different between the side setback. For all these reasons, I approve this variance.
A motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Freary?
Uh, yes, for the reasons stated. I would also add that if it wasn't for the applicant's decision to get involved in raising chickens, that this structure would sit where it's at with no variance and nothing would change, so I see no reason to disturb it. So I, I vote yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
But for the application for the chickens, we wouldn't be here discussing a variance of one foot. Concerning a structure that's been there for thirty years, it hasn't bothered anybody. I'm uh, absolutely going to uh, vote yes on this application.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairman Goodman?
For all the reasons stated, I will also vote yes. The variance is granted. I want to thank you for taking the time to come out this evening.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you. I, it's kind of a pain to have to deal with the code issues. I'm sure you probably have other things you'd like to do with your time, but I really appreciate it and I hope to make it a great experience for my kids and we're gonna share na, eggs with the neighbors and thank you so much.
Good luck to you and your chickens.
As, as the grandson of a chicken farmer, good luck with everything. Okay. If we could call the next case, please.
The appeal of Matthew Wall for a variance from section two twenty-eighteen B two of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at twenty-four seventy-three Rosendale Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R-one low-density residential zoning district, to construct a chicken coop which exceeds the number of allowable accessory structures on the property. Section two twenty-eighteen B two states that there shall be not more than three accessory structures on a lot. There are currently five accessory structures on the property, two garages, a woodshed, a smokehouse, and a corn crib. As proposed, the coop represents a six accessory structure. Therefore, a variance for three additional accessory structures is required. Eight notices were mailed out, one was received.
This letter is from uh, Willard and Margaret Reynolds from two four seven-five Rosendale Road. And they write, "We are the next-door neighbors of the walls and definitely feel that they should use one of their many existing accessory structures for chickens. We are very familiar with backyard chickens as our daughter who lives in Greenfield, New York, has had them for years, housed in an existing structure and on her Once Upon a Time farm. She also has seven acres of land and her chickens are free-range. Since the walls have considerably less property, we're hoping any chickens will not be free-range in our yard, will not free-range in our yard, which is very close to theirs. The wall should spend any disposable income on having their house painted as it is becoming a bit of an eyesore in our neighborhood." Uh, Willard and Margaret Reynolds.
I would ask if the applicant could please come forward, set forth your application, the variance you're requesting and what efforts have been made to mitigate either the size of the.
That's not us. Uh, hi, I'm Matt. I'm sorry.
Alina, sorry, I was, so Matt, sorry, I was. Alina, you're not muted.
Sorry about that.
Sorry. Okay. Uh, I'm Matt Wall. I'm at two four seven-three Rosendale Road and this is.
Mika Hoffman, also two four seven-three Rosendale Road.
So, um, the, this is an old farm, uh, as um, you know, sporting material indicates, it's been here since at least the eighteen-fifties. Um, the five accessory structures, the way they're counted, uh, just to correct the record, one of them is not a garage, it's a carriage house. Uh, so it's got about a six-foot-six overhead. Um, and uh, the, the garage in the back was built in nineteen sixty. Blew down the other structures on the property. Um, the three remaining structures, um, there's a woodshed, uh, which was sort of enclosed and cobbled together in at least three different construction phases over the years. Um, which is in, I want to say dilapidated, but it's not in, not in great shape. It's a log structure and we use it to house um, uh, the things that we've found on the farm as we've been cleaning it up. We've taken, we've been here since two thousand and twelve and we removed four dumpsters of uh, trash and garbage and also quite a bit of invasive uh weeds that were on the property. Um, the uh, other two structures, one is a corn crib. If you're familiar with a corn crib, it's got slatted sides, um, and it's uh, it can't be made predator-proof. Um, and the other structure is a smokehouse, um, which has got creosote buildup on the inside.
And no ventilation.
And no ventilation, yeah. Um, so we, we certainly were, are using uh, an existing structure, any of them have been appropriate for chickens, but chickens need ventilation. They need something that's not too big because they like to flock and it's also important to keep them warm. Um, and it, you know, obviously they've, they've got to have uh, sufficient light and heat. Um, so the proposed location we have, we carefully picked, so it's out of line of sight of both neighbors on, on both sides. Um, it, it's shielded from the Reynolds by both the corn crib and the uh, smoke苗s, which are closer to the property line, obviously. And on the other side from the, the Graffs at twenty-four seventy-one, uh, by their garage and their shed. by their garage and their shed, both of which are in the line of sight. The their shed is not on the diagram I drew up, but it's in the pictures. If you want to take a look at the pictures from from that side. And we wanted to, you know, get an appropriate chicken coop, so.
All right, question for Ms. Robertson. The number of structures that are currently there are all grandfathered in?
Yes, they are. Council, Ms. Alina Finn and I were actually talking about the way that the denial is written prior to the meeting. And it really probably is written wrong because the five of them are grandfathered in. It should, even though it's the sixth accessory structure, it really should just be written as one additional accessory structure that's being granted a variance because the five are allowed.
Thank you. Question for the applicant. Are any of these, how old are the structures that we're talking about that are currently there?
Um, they date to at least the eighteen eighties. The carriage house is almost certainly before eighteen sixty, based on the woodwork and the nails. Both the carriage house, the carriage house, the corn crib and the smokehouse all have what are called T-head nails on them, which were before machine nails were available. So that indicates a construction date certainly prior to eighteen seventy-one, but certainly probably a little earlier than that. The woodshed, it's a little bit harder to tell because it was clearly an open woodshed at once, one point, and so it's got sort of three different sides and on the inside it's split up. So it's a little bit harder to date that one more precisely. They were all on, in the nineteen eighty-three survey, obviously. But beyond that, we can only surmise it from the construction records. I will say, we have aerial photographs from the county available from nineteen forty-two and the early nineteen fifties. And they showed, insofar as you can make out from the aerial detail, they certainly showed all the buildings there. There were, we counted up nineteen buildings and we have found sixteen foundations.
Are there historical preservation purposes in not being able to convert any of these buildings to a chicken coop? And are those not only personal, is there any kind of code issues that you have with regard to make changes to historical structures here?
I don't know about code. This is not a registered house, although perhaps it should be. I have reason to believe it might have been built as early as the eighteen forties. It was on the eighteen fifty-six atlas. And certainly, we bought this place with the idea of preserving it. It, you know, the the structures are kind of unique and they're they're neat and we did not want to significantly alter them. We haven't made, we haven't converted either one. The the only changes we've made were we had to clear debris out of the both of them, both the corn crib and the smokehouse were just stacked to the rafters with garbage. And we had to take out, you know, there were sharp nails that were sticking out. We had to do some repairs in order to keep one of the beams. I had a sister in order to make sure it was stable. But, you know, our our intent is to try to leave the buildings as is, to try to preserve the character of the place.
Thank you.
Mr. Wall, the, this is Keith Frary. The, as I look at the 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 map of the property, so are, other than than in what we would call a restored condition, do you use any of them for any purpose? I mean, obviously, the garage, right?
Yeah, the corn crib, we put our summer lawn furniture in just to get it out of the of the weather. And then the corn crib's a little bit more problematic because the creosote, so we just use it to hang hoses in.
Smokehouse?
Smokehouse, yeah.
Okay.
We use it to hang hoses off of nails on the side, but that's it right now. Yeah, the woodshed, we, what we did, when we cleared out the back where the barn had been blown down, we kept finding artifacts. So we have been, some of them, unfortunately, were just completely crumbled to pieces, so you know, weren't weren't salvageable, but we've we've been using the woodshed to store the farm artifacts that we've found in the rear.
Are you in the, are you in touch with or in the process of of any type of historian or or somebody who is taking a look at the, what you're doing with this, or is this just something you're doing on your own?
Uh, we're doing it on our own. I mean, I've talked to Dennis Brandon, the town historian, and a number of people in the town, just about the property. I love talking about the property. In terms of preservation, the the Reynolds alluded to this, but the the facade of the main house, it was done in what's called a vernacular Greek revival style. The vernacular part is because each house was idiosyncratic and relatively unique, so in in order to do a full restore on it with the carpentry, which has to be done before the painting, we've got to get up and find somebody who can recreate a plaster out of appropriate material. You know, we don't want to put vinyl siding on a house. We want to keep the wooden plasters intact. And the same thing with the cornices on the eaves. That's going to require a craftsman, so you know, we're we're working on it. We're trying to, we'd like to try to make sure we preserve that, but we've got to get the carpentry done first on that before we can do the painting on that. We do have a master plan for the house. It's got a fifteen-year time span. My, uh, my uncle, my late uncle, owned a farm out in Cooperstown. He's a surgeon at the Bassett Hospital there. It was an eighteen thirty-nine farm. And when we bought the house, he gave me the advice, you will never be done. Don't think you can do everything at once, but make sure you're always working on something. And eventually, it'll stabilize.
Makes sense. So as I understand it, the, let's let's put aside, you got the house, the garage, the other accessory structures
Yep.
are not conducive to, you you literally have to tear them down and build something else to use it as a chicken coop.
Yes, and we would, it'd be, I really want the chickens. Mika grew up with chickens, but I'm not going to tear down any of those structures.
No, I'm not suggesting you do, but that that would be the length you would have to go to to use one of the other accessory structures.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any comments or questions from any members of the public? Hearing done, I would ask if any member wishes to make a motion.
Yeah, this is Keith Frary. I I'm gonna move that we approve the variance while I'm sensitive to the fact that we've got a lot of accessory structures on this property. I think, as Laura said, they're grandfathered, so we're just talking really about, I guess, for lack of a better term, what's one, what's one more? But the reality of it is, is I I I'm very intrigued by what the applicant is doing on the property. I think that he should be, that they should be commended for all the work that they've done so far to to at least get it in a in a the condition that it's in. And and I wholeheartedly encourage them to keep going for it, but in terms of the accessory structures that are there, there is not one at all that could be converted to a chicken coop. It would have to be torn down, and I think it defeats the purpose of what they're doing on site. So I I don't think, given the location, it's going to change the characteristic of the neighborhood. I don't think there's an environmental issue. Certainly, there's an admirable historic issue. The one thing is to make every effort to sort of incorporate the new chicken coop in with the the old stuff. So you don't have kind of an odd the the redheaded niece or nephew kind of thing there. So I would encourage them to to, as best you can, to incorporate it such that it it fits in with the neighborhood, meaning the other accessory structures in a historical fashion. Obviously, to some degree, it's self-created. But that's not dispositive in terms of of any variance. So for those reasons, I'm gonna vote that we approve the variance.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second?
I'm gonna second the motion, Mr. Chairman, for all the reasons stated.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, I would ask if the court could call the roll.
Mr. Frary?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
I think it would be a shame to knock down the other historic accessories. And even if that were the case, there's, in my mind, been adequate discussion that that's it's not a reasonable thing to do. So for the reasons stated, I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reasons stated, I'm gonna vote yes on the motion. I'm gonna reiterate what others have said, that in order to achieve this goal of having a chicken coop, there would have to be the removal of several buildings that are otherwise grandfathered in and are allowed. We have, this is one of the most unique situations that I've seen in the time that I've been on the board, where somebody is trying to preserve structures that have been in the town for a century and a half and preserve some of our history while still being able to achieve a goal that is within the zoning ordinance. And I would applaud them for the presentation they gave us tonight, as well as the way they put their application together and the work they are doing to preserve things in the town. So I want to thank you for your time this evening and your application is granted.
Thank you very much. We hope to make you guys proud.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I would ask if we call the next case, please.
Appeal of John Spindler for a variance from Section 220-18B3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 1369 Region Street, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district to construct a twenty-two-foot-by-twenty-two-foot garage partially within the side and rear setbacks. Section 220-18B3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structures shall be the same as applies to the principal building. As defined, major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of one hundred and twenty square feet, the garage at four hundred and eighty-four square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IC establishes a side setback minimum of fifteen feet and a rear setback minimum of twenty feet. As proposed, the structure will be located three feet from the side property line and three feet from the rear property line. Therefore, both a twelve-foot side yard setback variance and a seventeen-foot rear yard setback variance are required. Eighteen notices were mailed. One response was received.
This letter is from David Hooper of thirteen seventy-four Myron Street. And he writes, "I received your letter with regards to John Spindler's variance appeal of the zoning ordinance for thirteen sixty-nine Region Street. My only objection would be that Mr. Spindler remove a branch overhanging my yard. The branch broke off from his tree during a storm and came to rest in his neighbor's tree and my yard. I removed as much of the branch as possible. The remaining section of the branch is still in his neighbor's tree. I am concerned that if the branch were to come down, that it would damage or destroy my fence. When Mr. Spindler informed me that this November, when Mr. Spindler informed me this November that he was removing the tree, I asked if he could also remove the overhanging branch. He said he was not interested." Uh, thank you, David Hooper, thirteen seventy-four Myron Street.
I would ask if the applicant could please come forward?
I'm here.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. If you could set forth what your application is, the reasons for it, and what you have done to mitigate the need?
Definitely. My name is, well, first of all, thank everyone for staying out this late in this meeting. Thank you to all the board members. My name's John Spindler. I'm at thirteen sixty-nine Region Street, and we're looking to knock down an existing one-car garage and build a two-car garage on the existing structure or the existing platform. The extension of the garage will be extended into our, into our lot and not go further into the neighbor's lot. So we're primarily just looking to update our yard and update, update the lot in general. As many of you know, we're in Old Niskuna, which the lots are actually quite narrow. Most of the garages here are detached, which is what ours is as well, and they all for the most part, set very close to the property lines. So we want to keep the existing garage the same spot as the existing garage, just extend it further so we can make it a two-car garage. And that is, and that is pretty much all that we'd like to do. We also want to update the siding on the garage so that it would match the house. Right now, it doesn't. I believe the garage has siding on it from probably about thirty or forty years ago, which we did not update when we did an addition about about five years ago. And and it's, you know, it's just gonna be a little bit more, more noticeable even from the street. As you look down our driveway, we are on Region Street, which the the parade goes by every year and hopefully will again this year after missing last year, so. It'll definitely have a nicer appearance, even though it's in a far part of our lot. It's only ultimately about a hundred and ten or so feet from the street, the front of the garage, so. Hopefully, the board will take into consideration this variance and move forward with construction.
Laura, I have one question for housekeeping. This was not in the main packet when I opened it up.
Yes, um, we sent, Linda noticed that as well. There's a secondary link. I can email it to you really quickly. It's on the online one. Does anybody else need that emailed to them quickly?
Yeah, if you could email that link to me.
I will.
Thank you.
I'm in the online one and I don't see it either.
Yeah, Linda did send one.
Okay, if you could email it to me as well, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. For the online one, it starts at page one oh seven. And I I'll just email the whole board just in case, just to make sure. So just give me a second.
And to the applicant, I apologize for this slight delay.
No problem.
I would ask while we're waiting if any members of the board want to have have questions that they want to ask while we're getting this.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I got a couple of questions. Mr. Spindler?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
You said you have a single garage right now?
Yes, it's a single garage with a carport. And basically, if you combine the single garage with the carport, that would equal the two-car garage that we're proposing to build.
Okay, and you mentioned something about your existing garage right now. How far is this from the side that you're requesting a variance for?
Uh, it's three feet from the side property line and three feet from the rear property line existing.
So where is the carport compared to your single garage right now? Is it between the house and where is it compared to the single garage, right next to it?
It's right next to it. It's built, the carport is built off the side of the garage. As you're looking at the garage, it's to the left, so it extends into our yard.
Okay, so the carport is to your yard, not to the other side, okay?
Yes, the other side is the other, the other neighbor's property.
And how long you had that carport in there?
Uh, well, we we've lived here since about two thousand and four. And at least from what my neighbor had mentioned, if you And at least from what my neighbor had mentioned a few weeks ago, the carport has probably been there at least 20 or 25 years.
Okay, so your plan is take the single garage out, remove the carport and build the two-door garage?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, and that two-door garage is going to take a place exactly? Uh, what kind of foundation, uh, are you going to have a new foundation or are you going to use the same?
I believe it will be an Alaskan slab foundation.
Okay, so, uh, so you're putting new foundation in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the part, the existing foundation is probably, uh, it could be original to the house itself. I'm not sure, which was built in 1920, 100 years ago. So, uh, that foundation is, is all, uh, basically, uh, cracked up and, um, it's not flat. We can't even use it for, for a car right now. So we're basically just using it for storage, but we'd like to use it for, uh, for our cars, the new garage.
And how about the height of the garage? Are they going to be the same like the single or any difference?
It'll be the same.
It'll be the same, so you're not going to have a, okay, less than 15, okay. All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
What, Linda, was, or Laura, was there a variance for the carport when it was put in 25 years ago?
We didn't, um, we didn't show any variances in the, in the file, except there was a recent variance for a pool. But no, we didn't come across any variance for the carport.
Okay, thank you.
Oops, sorry. Um, I did email the link to you guys. I think, okay, good. The big difference is one of them ended in two and one of them ended in three, and I apologize for that. But if you need anything too, just tell, I'll scroll to the packet too.
So sir, what you're basically looking to do is to get a one-car garage with a carport into a single two-car garage?
That's correct, yes.
And you're on the exact same footprint?
Yes.
And that footprint's been there for, with the garage for maybe 100 years with the carport for at least 25?
Yes, that's correct.
Laura, can you change, show the other picture?
Yeah, it's not, yeah, because otherwise we wouldn't deny it. If it went on the exact same footprint, he would be allowed to build it. It's just a tiny bit bigger. I'll bring it up here. That's what I was trying to zoom in on. He's showing this, this picture right here shows the existing, this, the dotted line is the existing garage foundation.
Okay.
And then he's making like this, but here is probably just, you know, to fit the extra car.
And, uh, how much larger is that? Oh, so that's the existing garage, not without the carport there?
Without the carport. The carport's not shown on this drawing. This is the foundation of the existing garage and be allowed to rebuild on. And then, yeah, so it's like four feet wider this way.
So it's actually smaller overall than the garage and the carport is?
Well, the carport, actually, I did measure out to be, the end, the coast of the carport that exists now is, is, is actually 22 feet, uh, from the, the edge of the garage on the right side.
And how big are you proposing now?
And there's a couple of feet of asphalt on the left side of the, uh, so the, the carport area is basically about half asphalt and half concrete.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Uh, just if I may, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Spindler, good evening. This is Richard Green.
Good evening.
Uh, in your, uh, immediate neighborhood, um, say going, uh, a half dozen houses in either direction, uh, is it correct that there are many one-car and two-car garages in your neighborhood?
Actually, the majority of them are two-car garages.
So if this, uh, board were to grant your application, uh, we'd be removing, uh, the site of a carport in its place if the application's granted, uh, permitting you to construct two-car garage, which would be similar to many, if not most of all, of the, uh, properties in your immediate neighborhood. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I would ask if there's a board member who wishes to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if, I would be pleased to make a motion for consideration. Uh, this application, uh, is, presents us with a, a benefit that, uh, I don't see how could necessarily be achieved by other, any other feasible means. Uh, the, the truth of the matter is, while the, uh, specific property is not unique, the properties in this section of Niskuna are unique in that they are, as they've been described, tight, uh, when, uh, there are garages. The fact that there will be, uh, and not to suggest that the carport was undesirable in and of itself, but, uh, with the removal of the carport and the, uh, building of a two-car garage structure, this would in fact not be an undesirable change, but arguably a desirable change in the neighborhood. It would fit in, uh, it would seem, uh, with the character of the neighborhood. And while the request may be seen as substantial, it's not so substantial in that the, uh, proposed, uh, structure is, uh, essentially, as I understand it, in the same, uh, footprint and in the same location on, on the parcel. Uh, I, I don't see that there would be adverse physical or environmental effects. And, uh, whether or not this is a self-created difficulty, certainly while relevant is not determinative, so I'm not going to trouble, uh, my fellow board members with discussing that point any further. Because I don't think, uh, it really is relevant. So accordingly, I would, uh, move that, uh, this gentleman, Mr. Spindler's application for a variance be granted.
There's been a motion made. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll?
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Latif?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairman Goodman?
I vote yes for the reasons that have been stated. Sir, the application for variance is granted. I want to thank you for taking the time to come out this evening.
And thanks to all of you. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
You as well. If we could call the next case, please.
The appeal of Peter Lyon for a variance from Section 220-18B 2, Section 220-53A, Section 220-53B, and Section 220-13 Schedule IC of the zoning ordinance of Town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 2006 Grand Boulevard, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium density residential zoning district to construct a two-story addition that exceeds the 10% increase in usable floor area of a non-conforming building and is partially within a side setback. Section 220-53A states that a non-conforming building may be structurally altered as long as cumulative alterations do not add more than 10% of the usable floor area of said building or structure as it existed on July 1st, 1971. And when a valid zoning and building permit have been obtained, such alteration shall not tend to increase any inherent nuisance, nor shall such alterations violate any provisions of this chapter regarding yard, yards, lot area or lot coverage from the district in which it is situated or increase any existing violation of such provision. The existing usable, usable floor area of your building is 3140 square feet, hence allowing a maximum alteration of 314 square foot or 10% alteration. As proposed, the addition is 480 square feet or a 50% alteration. Therefore, 166 square foot or 5% vary, variance from Section 220-53A is required. Section 220-53B allows, in addition to a non-conforming structure that brings it no nearer to the sideline than the existing structure or one-half the required distance from the zoning district, whichever is greater. Section 220-13 Schedule IC requires a side yard setback of 15 feet. Since the existing house is only 4.85 feet from the sideline, 7.5 becomes the minimum required side setback. As proposed, the addition will be seven feet from the sideline. Therefore, a half-foot side yard setback variance is required. 13 notices were mailed, one received.
Um, I, this, this letter is from the Lamalphas. Hi, this neighbor, Peter Lyon, 2006 Grand Boulevard. We live at 1315 Dean Street and we see no issue with the zoning of his two-story addition he wishes to construct. Thanks. The Lamalphas.
Okay, I would ask if the applicant could please come forward, set forth your application, the reasons for it, and what efforts you made to mitigate either the need for a variance or the size of the variance?
Hi, everybody. Uh, thanks for letting me join you on what it seems to be a blockbuster night. Full of good conversation and discussion, um, especially like the chicken combos. It's, it's cool that Niskuna has allowed that, so. Uh, my name's Peter Lyon. I reside at 2006 Grand Boulevard, uh, with my wife and two children. I have a five-year-old and a three-year-old. We, uh, you know, are, are excited about the addition and the potential square footage that it can add to the house. Uh, in, kind of, and Lou, as we were thinking about the project, uh, over the last year, year and a half, as it's not something that we've just rushed into, uh, we looked at, uh, completing the project within the existing square, uh, footprint of the home. Um, but there, there's not enough space there. Uh, we have looked at purchasing, uh, a larger home within this portion of old Niskuna, but haven't found something that is, uh, with, within the, our current budget, um, in, in terms of price of home and then the additional investment uh, in terms of, um, any types of renovations that might need to take place uh, due to older, um, bathrooms or kitchens, et cetera. Uh, and then we also looked at, uh, even moving, um, the project more to the center of the house, but thought that might, um, impact, um, the view from, uh, if you're looking at the house from Grand Boulevard, the left side, uh, as, uh, the, the street view, uh, you can currently see kind of into our entire backyard, um, which is fine and I think is probably much nicer than, than seeing an addition. We, uh, when we looked at designing the addition, um, we, uh, made it so that it would replace the existing, um, covered porch footprint and even took into, um, the idea that, uh, that covered porch is, uh, currently six feet from the house. And so with the addition, we moved it even a foot further away to be more in line with, uh, what, uh, zoning code allows. In terms of, uh, the square footage not being able to exceed 10%, I didn't know about that rule. Um, so that one, that one caught me a little by surprise. But, uh, I'll say that the additional footprint that's represented, um, is a mudroom portion that's more towards the, the center of the property. Um, and it's only a single, single-story portion of the addition as to a two-story portion. With any of our designs, um, we're trying to, um, um, you know, you, yeah, enable water infiltration. Uh, we're looking at incorporating more solar energy. Um, we're continuing to move forward with the geothermal, geothermal installation and, and that process in an effort to have a better positive, uh, environmental impact uh, in the way that we utilize the space. We need more square footage, uh, and a second bath because our five-year-old and our three-year-old will soon be, uh, 10 and then 15 and, and 18, and we want to be in the house long-term. We really like the neighborhood. Uh, we really like living in the town of Niskuna and the location. And this is where we'd like to raise our family, um, in, in the house that we're currently. And, um, so I guess if that, uh, answers those initial comments, I'd love to answer some questions.
Any board members have questions?
I got a couple of questions, uh, easy one. I'm hoping that, uh, now you know you're over 166, uh, square feet, right? So that's, uh, that's almost 12 by 12 or something like that. So you mentioned the mudroom and you mentioned the second bathroom. Tell me about those two things, because it looks like that's what's adding to your square feet, uh, for the 10%. How big is the mudroom that you're going to have? And there's any way you can make it smaller, uh, to, to justify less, uh, square feet?
So if you look at page three of the architectural drawings, you can see that the mudroom is five foot wide by 12 foot deep.
Okay.
And that, uh, aligns with our, um, existing back door, which we use as our primary entrance. Right now, when you enter that back entrance, it's a very small landing. Um, so having an additional square footage there, I, I should have mentioned this is one of the other, you know, reasons why we're interested in the addition, because it provides, uh, ample space for, to get snow gear on and off, to get, you know, boots on and off in, in the, when it's raining. So it, it would be, I guess it would be difficult not to include that because it is one of, you know, one of the primary reasons along with, you know, the, the other aspects. Right now, we only, we have one full bath and one half bath in the house. Um, and so we thought having two full baths would, uh, not only serve our family better uh, as we continue to get older, um, in the home, but in the long run, you know, better, better serve any individuals that would, would purchase the property as well. Because I would think that most homes now have, um, you know, at least two full baths. I feel like in a lot of properties, that's, uh, you know, a low number, yes, but.
I, I don't disagree with you on that one. I have a couple of kids myself and I know that the bathroom are needed. Uh, one more, one more question for you on the side setback. It looks like, uh, Uh, one more, one more question for you on the side setback. It looks like uh uh because you are non-conforming, so uh it goes down to seven point five. So basically, you're asking uh four point five, half a foot. Is that right?
Yes, that's true. And if you if you look at page one of the drawing packet on the right-hand side, you can see the existing um enclosed porch is six foot from the property line. Um, yeah, right there, you can see the existing enclosed porch is six feet from the property line. And in consideration of the of the seven and a half foot, we bumped over the addition um a a foot, because we 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 wanna follow the rules, um because we know they're there for a reason. Um, if we were to move it over further, it would um impact some existing solar panels that are on the back of the house. Uh, and and we would then have to remove solar panels, um whi- which is an another reason why we just went with a foot instead of a a foot and a half. But we tried to make um compromises and considerations uh to follow the zoning code uh when designing the project.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thanks for your questions.
From the board? Anyone in the public who wants to be heard for or against the application? Hearing none, I'd ask if any board members wish to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion. Uh, we move to approve this uh application. Uh, this is a non-conforming property uh that uh the applicant uh tried different ways to achieve the benefit that he uh wanted to do, and it looks like uh this is the best way they can achieve uh uh all the stuff that they need to accomplish and be able to have enough room for him and his family. Uh, is the request substantial? Uh, it is a little bit substantial uh in one of the areas where uh because of non-conforming, the ten percent uh usable space, uh but it looks like the design is uh really comfortable for his family, and uh it's not gonna be in any way uh affecting the environment. Uh, whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, again, uh this is where uh the non-conformant is uh causing that percentage. And also, uh, I want to talk about uh the side setback is not really substantial. It's only half a foot to the side, and it looks like the applicant is uh looking to make sure that his panels not getting uh uh in the way. And uh for all these reasons, I move to approve this uh applicant application.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
This is John Hope. I will, I will second for all the reasons stated.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would ask if we could please call the roll.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. P- uh, Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Antonakowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Chairman Goodman?
For the reasons stated, I will also vote yes, sir. Your variances are granted. Good luck with your project. Thank you for taking the time to come out this evening.
Uh, and and thanks to everyone here tonight. Um, really appreciate your decision, move forward um as well as the time that you guys serve um every month, um, you know, uh working on these difficult decisions um and moving projects forward for the community members. Appreciate it greatly.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you. Bye.
Any other business to come before the board this evening? Hearing none, I would ask if there's a motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
May, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adjourn carries. I want to thank everyone for their time this evening.
Everybody, take care.